We're gonna call an order of public hearing for March 22nd, 2016. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Jenna's Carter Beer. Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Public hearing, item number one, an ordinance relative to alcohol beverages and Sunday alcohol sales. Lamar Marshall.
Mr. President and Council, we're just bringing this up for a public hearing again today. You know, we've looked at this issue from a fairness perspective, you know, there's been lots of conversations, sure. There are several people that are gonna wanna talk about it tonight, so I have a few comments I wanna make, but in the respect of the citizens who wanna maybe speak on, for, or against this ordinance, I'd like to yield until after that point.
All right. Do I have any other comments from the council? I know that, I assume there's a few people here that would like to speak, and I wanna be as fair to everyone as possible. I don't wanna limit anyone, but from a practical standpoint, we do need to limit the time you're allowed to speak. If some of the same issues are starting to come up over and over again, then we may move forward. So, I'm gonna give you three, four minutes. I know that's tough, but again, from a practical standpoint, we wanna let everyone have an opportunity to voice their opinion. So, I guess we'll start with those who are not in favor of this ordinance, and when you come up, I would ask that you give your name and address for the record, and that you be respectful to each other. Please don't address other people in the council audiences, and just, I ask that you address the council with respect, and I would ask the council to do the same thing. So, we'll get started with anyone that would like to speak against. Mike?
Sarah.
Yep, come on up.
My name is April Foster, and I am in Mike Williams District 5. Lived in Whitmore Acres, I don't know, long time, and moved out for just a temporary time, but anyway, so I'm here on this-
April, I'm sorry, what's your address?
Oh, 16 Selman Avenue. And I'm here to speak on the status quo, that bars should continue to remain closed on Sundays in the city limits of Hammond. I have a couple of points that I wanted to make in regards to that. My point number one is the promotion of a family-friendly community. One of the goals of Hammond, I've been a resident since I was three years old, and one of the goals of Hammond, I know personally, since my father-in-law was the mayor of Hammond for 12 years, is to promote a family-friendly atmosphere. And I believe that by changing the status quo, that this moves us away from the goal to encourage families to come and reside as a resident in Hammond. My point number two is that the hours of business differ from a Monday through Saturday. So, what they're proposing in the ordinance is that they be open on Sundays till 11:00 PM on that Sunday night. And so, the six days that they are open, most people actually do go to bars in the evenings until 2:00 AM, and so logically, there's less people on the road. If the bars were open on a Sunday, that would increase, more people would attend during the day, considering that there are football games and other events, that people would go to the bars, and with the closing hours being 11:00 PM, it would increase the risk of safety concerns for our community. My point number three, community opinion poll survey. In 446 people were polled, and if anyone needs a copy of this, I can provide a copy. This was done February 29th, and 446 people were polled in the city limits of Hammond, me being one of them, I did get a phone call, with equal, and there is an equal distribution, actually, on page, page two, there's an equal distribution in all districts, and 66% of the people polled in the city limits of Hammond were not in favor of bars being open on Sundays. So, again, my question to the city council, especially Mr. Lamar, is, does the city council wanna go against what the majority of our citizens want? My point number four is the purpose of a bar. What is the purpose of a restaurant? What is the purpose of a grocery store? What is the purpose of a bar? The only option of purchase in a bar are drinks. My point number five is increased safety issues. Increased safety issues. People ask me the question, what does it matter if bars are already open six days a week? My question back to them, isn't six days enough? Even God took a day of rest. So, by opening one more day a week, this increases the chances of drinking and driving. My point number six is government regulations. Government regulations. The law was put in place for a reason at some point, because people moved to Hammond for a family-friendly atmosphere. My parents moved here when I was three years old, and my stepfather was an entertainer in New Orleans. When they looked at the geographical options, they chose Hammond 39 years ago because of its safety. According to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, our first need is physiological needs, our second is safety and security. We have laws in Hammond that actually keep strip clubs from coming in to Hammond, and we actually have car dealerships that must be closed on Sundays, too. So, to say that this is a government regulation that, you know, is, restaurants can be open and serve, and grocery stores can be open and serve, yeah, that's great, but we still have to have some government regulations. My last point is what, well, actually, these are questions for the council. What has changed over the course of the last few months, Mr. Lamar? When this ordinance, when this ordinance was introduced to the city council with two for opening the bars, and three against, are there possibly any other underlying agendas that the public is unaware of for this to be, being pushed again for the second time? I believe, Mr. Lamar, that the people have spoken, and I believe that the city council has already spoken. So, I'd like you to please consider voting against this change. The benefits definitely do not outweigh the harms involved. This ordinance should have never been reconsidered again, or considered again, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of the status quo. Thank you so much.
I don't hear from anyone else.
My name is Marvin Poole. I live in Lamar's district at 1102 Ruth St. Michael. And I know that most people here know that I'm pastor of church here in town, but more so than that, I have teenagers that are driving. I can't, if, you know, if I had my way about it, we'd just close all the bars, along with some other places, but we obviously have bars open. So, I don't know why do we need the bar open one more day? And why do we wanna put our children at risk? So, I'm not here just because of a religious deal. I'm here because I have teenage drivers. And just this, yesterday, a phone call was made to someone about coming to be a part of this today. They couldn't attend because one of their relatives had been killed by a drunk driver. We don't need to establish more opportunities for people to be killed. We wouldn't want terrorists in our town, we wouldn't want other crimes in our town, so why we wanna continue to open the bars and make it more available? So, my question is, why, Mr. Lamar, do we need the bars open one more, one more day? And someone said, well, because of fairness. Well, they've got six days, that's fair enough. And so, I just want you to think about that, and think about the repercussions of that, and consider that your children, and my children, and our community, and then the last thing I'd like to say is, we're a university town, and people feel very confident to send their kids here to our university. We don't want kids traveling back here, drinking on Sunday nights, then having to drive home, go to school, and we wanna try to keep our town as safe as possible, and keep our universities safe. Our university is a big part of our city, and if our university starts having trouble, our city has trouble. So, I think there's a lot of good reasons that we should not want the bars to be open yet another time. I thank you for not voting for it.
Anyone else opposed?
Hi, I'm sorry I was a little late getting in, but-
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Sandra Bowman, and I'm here on behalf of Pastor Samuel Brown and the Mount Vernon Missionary Baptist Church.
Can you state your address as well, please?
114 Morley Drive. Okay. We wanted to come and let you know our stance on it, because no, our church does not feel that it's necessary to have bars open on a Sunday. Again, I'll agree with this gentleman, 'cause we're talking about our children here. This is the place we live. Six days is enough to have a bar open. Sunday should be set aside for family. Spend time with your children, not going to the bars. We have enough bars open. You pass on streets with bars, you can't get down, kids all out, it's not only kids, adults and all, out on the streets drinking. We don't need one more day. Six days is enough. It's enough. We don't need that. Our church, we're here to say, we do not want bars open on Sundays. Thank you.
Anyone else opposed that would like to speak?
Monty Wascom, 702 Roush Collins. I'm in the middle of gutting out houses. It's not funny. Yellow shirts of my church family are all over. Operation Blessing is all over because of a natural tragedy that has hit our city. I'm a product of a family where alcohol has been very destructive. I think keeping one-seventh of the week available, keeping it off limits, one-seventh of the week is worth that time. I would urge my councilman to vote against his own ordinance. I would urge him the strongest way I know how. I respect you. This is a terrible position. These folks have spoke eloquently about what this will do to families. I can speak from experience of what this does for families. I don't know what else to say. Council members, do the right thing. You have to do the right thing. I'm out doing the right thing. Helping people rebuild their lives. Many are doing the same thing. What you're talking about will destroy lives. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak opposed?
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I live in Councilman Williams District, and I agree with the things that these folks have said, and said it very well, no need in repeating that. But there is a point that has bothered me a lot, and it hasn't been brought up in most of these discussions. There are bars in neighborhoods, in poor neighborhoods primarily, and people live there. They can't move away. Their investment in their homes is there, and they can't afford to move away. They have one day of relief, and they need it. And we need to consider those neighborhoods and those neighborhood bars, because these will be affected the same as the downtown area. Thank you very much.
Anyone else opposed? I'll hear from those who are in favor.
Tina Latino, Benny's Place, 204 West Thomas Street. I didn't come here prepared to say anything. I expressed my feelings on this issue last time. I do feel upset that bar owners are being targeted as if we are bad people, as if alcohol is illegal. It is not illegal. We are also hard-working community members, that, I'm also a Christian, I understand all of the concerns. I also have to say that with every bar owner and employee within the bar, we all have responsible vendor cards, we've been through trainings, we know when to get people out of the bars, we do try to prevent them from getting on the roads and driving. I can promise you, the last thing I would want on my conscience is knowing that someone has left our place, and has been in an accident, been killed, or worse than that, killed a child or anyone else. So, I just want you to consider that as well, that we feel that we do our part, we give back within the community, we're not as horrible as I feel that people are making us out to be. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think everybody knows me, Todd Delon, Red White &amp; Brew, 120 East Thomas Street, if you need my address. And I also didn't come prepared to make a statement today, but in all fairness, I'd like to rebut a couple of things that I heard today. First of all, the statistic of more accidents happening because of bars being open on Sunday is pretty preposterous. In fact, if you look up statistically the number-one killer of people on the road nowadays, it's actually teenagers who text. So, we're talking about penalizing a business owner who doesn't have a right to earn that extra day of income a week, which I think is leveling the playing field, is how I would view it. We have every entity in town that sells alcohol on Sundays, from drugstores to grocery stores, to big-box retailers, to restaurants, and restaurants have bars that service, full-service, 24/7, that's whatever time they close in the morning, 2:00 AM, unfettered. You don't have to go in and purchase food, although the law states that you have to purchase, 60% of their tickets have to be food. You don't have to purchase one stick of food. You go into a bar at a restaurant, and you can drink all day, unfettered, unmanaged, and I'm telling you, if you compared any restaurant bar to one of the bars that are here represented tonight, they're a lot less responsible, and they don't take the server's card seriously. And we do. We absolutely monitor everything that happens in our place. You can look up our police record, the Brew's been in business for 20 years, and not one time has the Brew been called for an incident related to violence, or alcoholism, or any of those problems. And I think it's only fair that we have the same opportunities to earn a living as a pastor would on Sunday. I don't get that opportunity to pass my collection plate on Sunday. That's my two cents. Thank you.
I'm gonna give everyone an opportunity to pass it. So, anyone else in favor?
My name is Richard Campbell. My address is 32 Pine Lane. Heard some discussion about what is fair, and isn't six days a week already enough? I'd like to ask you to consider what is fair is what is equitable. What is equitable is that all retail establishments that are allowed to sell alcohol be allowed to be open the same days and the same hours. I think that most everyone knows that alcohol is readily available in restaurants all over our town every Sunday. And there are no restrictions or rules that food has to be purchased in order to consume alcohol in those restaurants. So, I think that what is fair, what is enough, should be judged on the basis of what is equitable, and that would be that all establishments be afforded the same opportunities. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak in favor?
Yes, I'd like to address these statements here, because I want to address these gentlemen that own these bars.
Pastor, I'm sorry, I really have to ask you to address the council.
Okay. I wanna address the whole idea of the, you guys know me, I'm a fair guy. We came here, we were against video bingo. We was asked to take it to a vote. My stand on that was, if we take it to a vote, and the people vote for it, then every pastor in town ought to not bring it up again. And that's where I stood. Some of you were for that, and I respected you then, and I respect you now, true or false. And so, I'm not against the bar owners, I love people. 30 years ago, I was a drug addict and alcoholic. I worked in bars. I worked in bars before I was old enough to work in a bar. I understand the whole deal. So, I don't want these, I don't want people to think that I'm against the people. I'm not. I love people, and I respect people. My church was next door to Benny's Bar for many years. We got along great. We got along just fine. He asked me to respect him, and I respected him, and he respected me. So, this is not a personal issue. This is really an issue that's about our city, and about how to better our city, and so, that's where I stand. I don't want people thinking it's a personal thing, 'cause it's not.
And one other thing he said, again, I'm sure the people of Red White &amp; Brew, again, Ms. Latino, all of the bar owners that are currently here, I truly believe that they are upholding to the guidelines that's necessary. Again, one of the things is, we open another door. That's more my thing, is we have very responsible, very well-established business owners in the city of Hammond, but once you open that door to Sundays, then you've now opened it, and anyone who comes into the city of Hammond has to apply for the business license, and then they now have free liberty to open their bars on Sundays. So, we have additional businesses that are gonna come forth now with the opportunity to serve alcohol-only. I'm just saying that it's alcohol-only that's being served at this establishment.
I just wanna say one thing, we had had a new bar open in nine years that I've been on the council.
And you know what? That's awesome. No, and that's great statistics, and that's really actually encouraging to know that we haven't. But, again, we open the door, and when you open the door, you open it to these beautiful business owners, but then you also open it the door to future business owners that you may not have the integrity that these business owners may have. But that's something to consider. Once you open a door, it's a door for everyone. Status quo. What is wrong with what we have now? That's my, that's my whole question, and my comment to these people, is that we are not against them, we are just wanting status quo. We wanna just leave it as it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple of comments. I know I was addressed directly, so I'll try to answer some of those questions. But, you know, I, this is something that we've looked at, I've looked at for quite some time, and I come from a position of fairness, and most, and I try to be logical in my approach to most decisions that I make, and I try to encourage us to evaluate our ordinances that are on the books, to see if we can continue to do things that make our city fair and more equitable, as one of the gentlemen said, "for all of us." You know, one thing I look at on the council is that, you know, especially in the last couple of months, we've approved two bars. First of all, let's establish this, that bars are currently opening Hammond on Sunday. This isn't like we're making a rule for the very first time to say, we're gonna open bars on Sunday. You can refer to them, as I do, as standalone bars, and then we have restaurant bars. I can give an example. I can go to Chili's on Sunday, and the maitre d' or the hostess will ask me, "Do you prefer to serve in a restaurant or the bar?" You have that option every day. They will ask you, "Do you wanna go to the restaurant, or do you wanna go to the bar?" So, obviously, they distinguish the restaurant from the bar like most people do, and you have an option to say, "I wanna go to the bar." And you can go to the bar and watch a football game, watch a basketball game, drink a beer, hang out with your friends, and that's, and there could be, that's a normal activity in the city of Hammond on a Sunday. Just recently, we opened up, we just approved as a council, a restaurant or a bar called The Black &amp; Brew. The Black &amp; Brew boasts on the fact that they have some of the best beer in Hammond. That's why they're open. They're not open to sell hamburgers, they're open to sell beer, and they do that on Sunday. With all, with all respect for the peoples who thought otherwise, that happens every day. And then, just as a matter of fact, I was there a couple Sundays ago, and I ran into a councilman in the, in the Black &amp; Brew. We were sitting there together, and I was having, I was having a burger and a beer, and the councilman was in there, having, having a meal as well. But that councilman had that option to go to that place, whether it was a bar or a standalone bar, he had that option to be there, and he was there. And we don't wanna take away that right from him, to be able to go to a place that he enjoys going to, because he wants to go there. And then, we opened up another restaurant that's called The Horsemen, what's it called? The Iron Horse Grill and Spirits. And if you drive by there, you'll see approximately five or six large televisions in a very long bar designed as a sports bar. It's a sports bar. That's what it is. It's a bar designed to invite people out to come out and enjoy sports on a Sunday. And then, every year, this council approves the annual Holy Ghost Fair, which at the fair, we sell beer and daiquiris. And to carry that one step further, if we had a festival in Hammond every Sunday, and we all, as, as members of the city of Hammond, would be excited about that every single Sunday, this council would probably approve an alcohol ordinance of variance to allow that festival to sell beer on Sunday. I would almost guarantee that this council would 100% support any organization that wanted to sell beer on Sunday through a variance, if it was a festival. Barbecue and Blues Festival will be here, when is that coming? Right around the corner. They will sell beer on Sunday.
It's Friday, Saturday.
Well, well, if we had a festival on Sunday, they would sell, they would sell on a Sunday. If that was an option for them, it would be, I mean, we've had festivals that have, where we sell alcohol on Sundays right now. It happens every single, every single time we have a festival. So, to wrap it up, I understand the concerns, and I, and I too am very much a Christian, and I believe in fairness. I come from a vantage point of fairness, because fairness to me is a very important principle. You know, I grew up in an environment where fairness wasn't always available to people in my, in my neighborhoods or where I came from. So, when I have an opportunity to make something fair, and I look at a group of people who may be in a position where they're not being treated fairly, for no reason other than the fact that they are a standalone bar versus a restaurant bar, I think those are things that we should try to correct. So, I appreciate the feedback, and for those members who live in my district, I've talked with people on both sides, and I feel that the majority of the people who I've talked to are, and I have had some pastors as well, who agree with the stance that I've taken. So, with all due respect, I just wanna let you guys know, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate you coming out tonight and expressing your concerns, I just wanted you guys to hear my side of the story as well. So, thank you very much.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, last, come on, Mr. Louise.
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. So, you're telling me that these places that you have mentioned do not maintain the 60/40 ratio?
Well, in regard to what, Louise?
Well, you've, you've mentioned restaurants that you say are bars.
Well, I think that, I think that the 60/40 rule is not, now, let's say that the rule was, in order to go to a bar, a restaurant bar on Sunday, you have to order, and your individual ticket needs to be 60/40, that's a definition.
Yeah, I know the, I know the definition. I just was asking you whether or not they're violating that rule.
So, so, in the spirit of the law, they may not be, but if you think about it, the reason why you have a 60/40 is to encourage that patron to eat as well as drink, but it's not a requirement. There's no requirement to go to Tommy's, or Chili's, or whatever else, and have a pizza or a sandwich. You can go there and drink as many beers as you want to, or as many margaritas as you want to, with no intent of having to eat. So, I think that the rule, I think there's a, there's a, there's some flaws in that whole concept. I get why the city does it, because they wanna establish what a restaurant really is, and so they're using the 60/40 rule. But there is such a thing as a restaurant bar in those establishments.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and move on, I think we've heard enough from both sides, and are there any other councilmen that would like to make comments? And I thank everyone for being respectful and honoring that. Item number two, an ordinance authorized at the- Item number two, an ordinance authorized at the purchase of three lots bearing the municipal addresses of 600, 602, and 604 West Coleman Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 7043, from CB Investments and Properties LLC, for the appraised value of $206,000. Mayor Penapentho.
These are three lots that are across the street from the Michael Kenny Center. Three of five, we actually have enough money to purchase three in this fiscal year, we'll be going after the other two the next fiscal year, hopefully. This would allow us to extend parking for the Michael Kenny Center, which as of right now, is short of parking. If we have a big event, we're always looking for parking space. This particular piece of property was appraised. We cannot pay more than the appraised value. I think the income approached through appraisal headed, headed at a higher rate, but we cannot pay more than the, of the appraised value of the property. This, for the future of the rec center, I think is important to us, and I would ask the council to agree in purchasing this property. Very important for the Michael Kenny Center.
Do we have any council comments or questions for a mayor? Any public comments? I will move into our regularly scheduled meeting. Roll, roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Here.
Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Pastor Watson, would you lead us in prayer, please?
I'd be honored. Father, it's wonderful to live in this city where we can discuss and even disagree civilly. I, I, I'm really not sure I know how to pray right now, I had a lot of emotion going on with the people and the families that have suffered incredible losses from the floods. I pray for all the volunteers and the nonprofits that are stepping up big time to, to, to relieve, that you'll protect them against things. For our city, for Mayor Penapentho, for the, this council, for those in city court, for the police department, fire department, I simply pray wisdom for them. You, you, you say if we, if we lack it, all we have to do is ask you for it. And I, I ask you for it. And I'm asking for wisdom for them in faith, and asking you to watch over them as they deliberate. But, the decisions that they make, the ordinances they pass, they do affect people. And we know how much you love people. So, watch over this council, our mayor. Thank you for the privilege we have to live in this great city. In Jesus's name, amen.
And all veterans and active military to proper, I'll render a proper salute, councilwoman. Would you lead us in prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any council reports? Mayor?
Tonight, you will see on, an item under the introduction of ordinances to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the city corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2016. This allows the, two mills for public works, which actually funds and fuels our sewer and water department. This was voted on in November 21st, 2015, and passed by the voters, so I'm asking the council to go ahead and pass this. Storm report, emergency declaration was, was passed March 11th, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 AM the next morning, March 12th. We had 221 people that were evacuated in the city of Hammond by first responders. Houses flooded, Selman Street was like a river, it was incredible down your street, unbelievable. We had 16 houses in District 5, 10 in Whitmore, and 6 in Woodbridge that had water, 6 in District 1 on Hope Street, East Church, and East Thomas, 10 in District 4 on Alita Street. So, our heart goes out to all the people that had flood, and thank you for all the volunteers that are out there helping, and helping with families that are going through these tough times. Our entire airport was covered with water, we shut it down for 11 hours, other than helicopter traffic, at their own risk. We distributed 7,500 sandbags. Infrastructure damage, we had two sewer lift station motors that went down, that were down on University, Prodestine Bridge on Phoenix and Mooney, flooring in the social services building, and one of the offices was also damaged. We had no trees down, wasn't heavy winds, but then a week later, we had the storm with all the heavy wind, and not trees down. So, tonight, we ask the council to consider a FEMA-approved debris contract that we're partnering with the parish to help our residents clean up the debris. And on a good note, the Cleanest City judges will be here March 30th to look at our beautiful city, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would be remiss, since I have the microphone and, and newspaper here, to make a comment. Many of you may know that our family suffered a loss Saturday, a, a home burn, and we're fine, we're gonna be fine. But, the outpouring of support and love from this community has been more overwhelming and touching than, than the fire. And I just wanna publicly thank everyone that has offered prayers, gift cards, money, donations, it's just, it's overwhelming. My family is here tonight, and I've made them all cry.
And they added that outreach, too.
I never doubted that we lived in a wonderful community, but, again, the fire is, is, is nothing compared to the overwhelming feeling of, of, of support that we have, so thank you. All right, we have any new businesses that need to be, that wanna be recognized? We will, I'll ask for a motion to approve minutes of March 8th. Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, item number one, a resolution to approve the purchase of eight car cameras from Digital Ally for $35,395 with five-year warranty. Mr. Peters.
Good evening. We come to bring this to the council for approval. These are the cameras for the car that we just purchased. They are, we're going through Digital Ally, and we're basically staying with the same company because of the same computer system and such, and they do come with the warranty, and we are here for your approval to make this purchase.
Any questions, Mr. Peters?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number two, a resolution, one, accepting $190,000 in state capital outlay, outlay funds, two, agreeing to match these funds with $63,333 in cash, and three, authorizing the mayor to intune to an agreement to act on behalf of the city of Hammond with the state of Louisiana for the air traffic control tower elevator project. Charles Rochers.
The city's received $190,000 commitment from the state of Louisiana through its capital outlay fund. This includes $140,000 in cash, and $50,000 essentially in credit that we're expecting to get later. We're asking for approval to go ahead and make our match requirement, which is 600, uh, $63,333, and that'll allow us to get started on the project more quickly.
Any questions?
Yes, there's two questions. We have the money in the, in the grant fund, right?
Yes, we do.
And two, this is the, this is the project for the roundabouts?
This project is actually for the elevator at the air traffic control tower. We're looking at-
So, I thought I said the gateway-
That's the second one.
Oh, okay, come on, we're on one, okay, okay.
Yeah. If you guys remember, when we built the tower, we built it so that we could install an elevator later, this is the elevator coming later.
Okay, all right, I'm bad, my mistake.
Anyone who's been up those steps would agree, yes.
Make a motion to approve. Roll call, please.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number three, a resolution, one, accepting $600,000 state capital outlay funds, two, agreeing to match these funds with $200,000 in cash, and three, authorizing the mayor to intune to an agreement, and to act on behalf of the city of Hammond with the state of Louisiana for the gateway to Hammond project.
This is the roundabout project. Similar to the previous one, the state has committed $600,000 to the project, we will have $160,000 in cash, we're expecting to receive $440,000 later on. We're asking for approval to go ahead and make our match requirement, which is $200,000, so we can kind of get started on this project, and hopefully get about halfway through when those next round of funds come down.
Any questions?
This is to landscape and install artwork, and basically dress up that entire area, turn it into a gateway to Hammond. The idea being that right now, it's very easy for someone on I-12 to drive right over Hammond, and not know they passed anything. This would, this would be something that you couldn't drive by without noticing. There's acres and acres of wildflowers in some of the latest designs, trees, there's murals.
Lighting.
Lighting, yes, all those, all those things. And we've, we planned it out in different phases, so this'll get us through the first phase of those improvements.
And Charles, just to be clear, the state funds, this phase one, that the state funds are going to, does not include any artwork? We're counting on a grant from the National Endowment of the Arts to fund the artwork. So, to be clear, this is for landscape and lighting of the corridor.
Yes.
And that's what you guys said the last time.
So, the artwork, you're talking about with sketches?
This phase two.
Yeah, that would be coming later, I apologize for the confusion.
Not to be confused with the art conversation.
I just wanna be clear that the state is not funding art.
Right. This would be for landscaping.
Not for this project.
Right, right.
All right, any, any questions? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number four, resolution to ratify and award bids received March 22nd, 2016, for playground equipment for North Oak Park.
There should be a link, a hyperlink, from the agenda to a bid summary and copies of the two bids, or at least the, the important parts of the two bids. The low bid, we received two bids. One bid was from BCI Burke Qualley Court Industries, the other bid was from Play World Systems Planet Recession. The bid from Play World Systems Planet Recession was the low bid. We are asking the council to approve an expenditure of up to $69,038.77, that was the low bid. And that includes an optional concrete slab. We're giving ourselves the option of installing it ourselves, but by, by approving an up-to amount, we also give ourselves the option of having a vendor install it, if we so choose. And there's actually, I think both designs were in that attachment, if you have any questions, or about what it's gonna look like. This is for North Oak Park.
Any questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number five, a resolution authorizes the mayor to intune to an intergovernmental agreement between the tangible parish government and the city of Hammond for debris monitoring and removal services. There are attachments. Lacy.
The link on your one is the actual intergovernmental agreement that we'd be signing with the parish. What they do each year, because most disaster management actually flows through the parish and down to the municipalities, is the parish does a pre-agreement with a contractor for debris cleanup in case there are any disasters that occur during the fiscal year. So, this is a pre-approved FEMA contract. What you have in your attachments, both number two and number three, one is for the collection of the debris, and itemizes all the different kinds of items that might be collectible following a disaster. The vast majority of items that we are collecting following this is, is construction debris. It's debris coming out of homes as they're pulling up floorboards or baseboards, that kind of thing. I have gone around, taken pictures of many of the debris piles that are already out there in front of the homes, and I have seen no appliances or other kinds of things like that. It's, it's mainly construction, it's flooring, it's carpeting, underlying, that kind of thing. The second contract that you'll see there is for debris monitoring. This is also required by FEMA. They actually have a FEMA debris monitor onsite at the landfill and, and around in the neighborhoods while the contractors are going through, to ensure that they are only picking up certified debris from the storm. So, there's a lot of hoops and a lot of paperwork that happens at, to ensure that this is a good, safe and credible funded taxpayer money. We are eligible for 85% reimbursement from FEMA for all debris that is collected, and we will only be collecting debris that is certified storm damage. It's not just general, pick up your trash, we still have trash collectors to handle that, that kind of thing. So, this is just at the addresses that we know took floodwater, and we're helping them get their, get back whole.
And you went out and took pictures of every pile?
Yes, sir. Of the debris piles in front of the houses, where we know we took water. The, the numbers-
That's a surprise, council?
Yeah, it did.
The numbers that the mayor-
Make sure they get picked up.
Those are the ones, the numbers that the mayor gave you tonight are the ones that we have confirmed flooded, that we've actually spoken with the homeowners, that we know how much they took. Most of the homes vary between just like an eighth or a half of an inch to, up to about a foot to a foot and a half. So, and it's all, if you, if you look at the map of Hammond, and you follow Ponchatoula Creek and its various tributaries throughout, you'll, you'll see immediately why it's the streets that we named off and whatnot, it's because Ponchatoula Creek is right there.
So, with this debris, when you say construction debris, does this include like paint and things?
It could include hazardous waste, but we're actually gonna handle that on a different way. What we are gonna ask the contractor to focus on, and what I have seen, you know, in front of all these homes, is like rolls of carpet, the pads that are under there, baseboards, those kinds of things. So, it's, it's demolition debris, more so than like what was in your shed out back, kinda stuff.
Okay, so, then this would include like if your sofa went under?
Correct, correct. There is one house that I did see a couch in front of.
Make a motion to approve. Roll call, please.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of the ordinance, number one, final adoption of the ordinance to relative to alcohol beverages and Sunday alcohol sales. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
No.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
No.
Johnny Blunt. Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Item number two, final adoption of ordinance to purchase three of the three lots bearing the municipal addresses of 600, 602, and 604 West Coleman Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 7043, from CB Investments and Properties LLC, for the appraised value of $206,000. So, move. Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter-Vier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of an ordinance set public hearing, number one, introduction of an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code regarding the duties and authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I recommend approval by Planning and Zoning Commission, Josh Taylor.
Andre, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. The, there was an attorney general's opinion that you couldn't hold dual offices, being a public official and planning commission, albeit you're not elected, you are a public official. So, you couldn't hold board of adjustments and planning commission. So, we shifted the duties of the board of adjustments over to the planning commission, So we shifted the duties of the board of adjustments over to the planning commission and they're just acting as the planning commission now. They do the same duties of both boards, it was the same people already, we just eliminated the board of adjustments and shifted the duties to the planning commission.
So in the introduction, are we going to be, are we going to be one, eliminating one position and then, and then redefining the other position?
The, the Unified Development Code formally created a board of adjustment, which is a separate independent group. Previous, the Planning and Zoning Commission handled the function of that. The problem is you, you can't be on both the planning commission and the board of adjustment. So the, the thought is to go back to the way we did it before.
Oh, I got you.
And have the planning and zoning just serve the function of the board of adjustment.
But will we, just, just for the record, will we have to officially then eliminate that other position?
This is going to do that.
This is doing that.
This is doing that, yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce.
Seth, roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for April 12th.
Item number two, introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Infinite Investments LLC to rezonate lot eight and block 78 of the higher survey located at 306 South Oak Street from RM2 to MXC in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden, Jr., dated 1/21/2016. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
Um, you, you may be familiar with the house with the white, the White House with the columns on, uh, right over here across from the new development going on, right over by Z Murray Park. It, uh, it's an eyesore. They want to rezone it to MXC, tear the building down and rebuild the lot. It's going to be apartments, it'll be a fourplex, but, um, in the spirit of cleaning that area up, it was, uh, they wanted to go MXN originally, which eased some concerns as far as usages, but MXN, the lot size was too big, the minimums, and so they would have been rezoned into a non-conformity. So MXC allowed them to be in full conformity and still do what they want to do. So that's why we opted for MXC.
Did you say this was 50 by 150?
Mm-hmm.
And you can put apartments on a lot that small?
Mm-hmm. You could stack them. Two stories. They'll still have to meet all their parking minimums and landscaping and everything else. Um, this isn't saying that they get to not do that stuff, it's just, it'll, it opens up the door for them to do more with the property.
That'll definitely look better.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to introduce?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for April 12th.
Item number three, introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Play and State Incorporated and Clarence and Linda Winnington to rezone a 90 by 660-foot parcel, 1.36 acres and S.E. quarter of Section 26 Township 6 South, Range 7 East located at 506 JW Davis from RS3 to RM3. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
Um, owner wants to go to RM3 to put apartments as well. It's in an area which predominantly rental already, so it abuts RM3 already. So, um, it was recommended approval by the planning commission.
Do you know what type of guy this person is that owns the property?
I think, I think he knows well.
Okay, all right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Introduce, sir.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for April 12th.
Item number four, introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by White Oaks Enterprise Incorporated and Clarence and Linda Winnington to rezone 0.568 acres lot, one of the Winnington subdivision, a lot measuring 203 by, point 51 by 332 by 51 feet and point 75 acres being located at 205, 203, 113, and 109 White Street from RM2 to RM3. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
Same owner, different company, wants to do the same thing, go to RM3. There's a bunch of lots that he owns, he wants to combine them into one, into apartments as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for April 12th.
Thank you.
Item number five, introduction of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2016. Public Works, two mills. Ms. Jenny.
Good afternoon. This is, um, standard procedure this time of the year that we have to adopt millage rates. And, uh, this year, we are doing it in two separate, uh, motions, so to speak, and we're separating, separating out the two mills from the rest only because it was a renewal tax. And it will be subject to a little different procedure as to how we go about it this year. So, uh, we are asking to set it. If you have any questions, um, I'm here to answer.
Motion to introduce?
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Dennis Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for April 12th.
Thank you.
April, what date? 12th. No. Oh, the 29th.
Twenty-six.
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 Is that on the calendar?
No, it's the 26th.
It's the 26th.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Have a motion for that.
Yes.
All right.